Working on something, I think you were working on the pictures at that point.
Six, five, four, three.
Okay, am I on? Ace is, okay, I'm on apparently. Yeah, Ace is like, six, five, whatever. Hi, everyone. This is Knowledge is Power. I'm Wanda Miller, the host. Sitting next to me is a familiar face. This is Ann Clark. For those of you who don't know, who may live under a rock, or you know, were in outer space for a little bit and just came back. This is Ann Clark, who does so many things that it's easier to say what she doesn't do than what she does.
Thank you.
And she is running for city council candidate.
That's right.
So, we're gonna talk to her a little bit, and we're gonna try an experiment tonight. We have the phone here. Ann is willing to take calls. We're going to wait until about the last 10, 15 minutes though, because Ann wants to talk about some things first, so we ask that you respect that. And hopefully, you know, if you have a question for her, because she is running for city council, it's important that she gets to know the public and the public gets to know her. So, you know, I asked her if she'd be okay with that, and of course, she said yes, so we're gonna, we're gonna try it. We're gonna see. We don't know. Might just be a telemarketer, Ann, I don't know.
That's okay, that's alright.
But maybe, you know, maybe they live around here.
They might live in the city of York.
You never know.
That's right.
You never know. You never know. So, first of all, I want to thank everyone for watching, for liking the Facebook page. We do have a Facebook page up. It's, it's the Knowledge is Power, York, PA, Facebook page. And last week, I have to apologize because we were pretty much a hot mess last week. We started out with sound, and then suddenly, sound went. And you could see us pantomime, but there was no sound. And I, I felt really bad. I had on Michelle Cooper, and also, it was Jessica Castle from the YWCA, and they were talking about really serious topics, human trafficking and domestic violence. They didn't get much of a show because the sound was off for most of it. So, we're gonna have them back at some point, and they're gonna get their chance to talk.
That's great. They're good people.
Yeah, they are good people. And of course, this week, or not this week, I'm sorry, yesterday, starting February, I'm still a little confused, you know, you gotta just bear with me, because sometimes my brain lags. February is Black History Month. You know, yesterday was February 1st, so it kicked off yesterday, and, 'cause I'm gonna just go really quickly tonight with the awards, because I want Ann to have plenty of time to talk. So, I'm giving the Golden Hammer, this week, to the ladies depicted in the film Hidden Figures. If you have not seen Hidden Figures, you need to go as soon as possible. If you don't have the money to go to the regular, the, the regular screenings of it over at Regal or Frank, 'cause they can be kinda pricey.
Yeah.
I, I don't know about Frank, but I do know that Regal, on Tuesdays, their films are like $5.50 for just a standard film. Or you could wait until it comes into the, the Fun Time Cinemas over on Queen Street. They're like $2.50 for during the day, and then I think it's after 6:00 or like $4.50 or something like that. So, and then, of course, you can always get it on Netflix or whatever afterwards, but it's, it's a, it's just an amazing story. It's, it's funny, it's poignant, it, it's just such a great history lesson. These are real women that lived during the, the time that NASA was, was battling with Russia in the space race. And the, the ladies depicted were Catherine Johnson, Dorothy Vaughn, and Mary Jackson. And it's just, it's just an amazing, it's just, it's amazing thing. There's, there's actually been something on, online of these, some school had a project in these three little, I posted on my Facebook page, these three little girls, these three little African-American girls, dressed up like the ladies in the movie, and it was so adorable. The, the actresses actually gave them tweets and things, and it's just really, it's just really cute. So, see, not all kids are gonna emulate the rappers and the, the TV stars and, you know, they'll, they'll emulate real-life people, but they have to have real-life heroes to emulate. So, you know, keep that in mind. Now, I'm gonna, next, I'm going to give a special award this week. I'm starting, I'm doing something. I had to actually create a special award for my friend Deb Yonick, who is president of the York County Federation of Democratic Women. And what I came up with is the Feisty Fox. Notice that she's pink, and yes, she does have a little Ann Clark button on, because Knowledge is Power is endorsing Ann.
I know, appreciate that.
As a city council candidate. And the reason that I'm giving Deb a special award is because something happened to Deb. She's out, out of town right now, she's on a, she's at a conference, and, if I can get this to come up, okay. This is what happened, and this was yesterday that she wrote this. She said, "At a conference where Bill O'Reilly was the speaker, had my pink pussy, pussycat hat on." And honestly, the hat that she has on doesn't even really look like it has ears, it's kinda more like a boxy type of hat. "Sitting quietly in the back of the room with no intent to disrupt, and was escorted out of the room and asked to leave the premises by two security guards, or I would be arrested. Never got to hear his talk. They didn't even ask me to remove the hat. Buckle up, it's gonna be a bumpy ride." And I wanted to address this, because this has been, this has been a back-and-forth issue on the Facebook page, of course. Of course, everybody's been really supportive of Deb. But one of the, the things that I suggested is that she go to the ACLU, and others have suggested the same. And Deb is a little hesitant, because she said they have bigger fish to fry. Well, that's true. But the way that we get those bigger fish to fry is from all these little isolated incidents.
Hmm.
And they add up. And I find this really hard to stomach, when we just had, last fall, we had Mayor Wasco with the orangutans that were supposed to be the, the Obamas. Also, the, the lynching of, of African-Americans, suggesting lynching of African-Americans on his Facebook page, and that was being defended as free speech. I don't see any, this is really what free speech is, ladies and gentlemen. Free speech is the right to assemble, it's the right of freedom of speech and freedom of expression. What some of these people are doing is not free speech, it's hate.
Yeah, it's inciting hate.
Yeah, it's inciting hate, and that's a whole different thing.
That's why it is different, because it incites hate.
Yeah, it's a whole different thing. If you're sitting quietly in the back, I mean, and if she even had a t-shirt on that had something inflammatory, that's something else. But she sat in the back, she had on a pink hat, you know, yes, it, it is a symbol of something that they may not like, but it's coming back to, you know, we, we have this, we, we have this divide in our country, and it's gonna keep getting worse unless we start working together. And we need to understand that everyone has freedom of speech. It isn't reserved just for Republicans, and isn't reserved just for Democrats, it isn't reserved just for people in between. Everyone has a right for freedom of speech. You may not like what I say here, I may not like what you say, but I'm gonna try to at least respect what you're saying, I'm gonna try to hear you. So, I think we need to really keep that in mind going forward. I, I'm, Deb is, is, as I said, she's out of town right now. When she comes back, we're gonna work on a time for her to come and have her actually talk about this, and, and explain exactly what happened. So, that is what happened there, and I have to give stinky skunk, of course, to Bill O'Reilly's security guards for doing that. So, so, Feisty and Stinky, Deb, we are, we are standing behind you, and it isn't, it isn't right, it isn't fair, there's no reason why you shouldn't be able to do a, a quiet protest. So, the next thing I'm gonna go on to, I'm gonna bring Annie into this, because we talked a little bit about this ahead of time, is there's, the York, the York Dispatch has an advisory board, a member advisory board. I'm on that, as well as Carla Christopher, Eric Smith, Salmae Johnson, there's all a bunch, Deb's on it. A whole bunch of really great movers and shakers, community leaders are on this board. Very intelligent, good, nice people. And one of the things that the Dispatch wants to do, is the Dispatch wants to start hearing from other people. I mean, it's, it's great that we all congregate, but it's, it's honestly, it's, it's kinda, it gets kinda boring if you're always hanging out with somebody that has the same opinion you have. Because you don't grow if you're always with someone that has the same opinion that you have. Yeah, you never fight, you don't have conflict, but sometimes conflict is healthy. It's knowing how to handle that conflict. And to that end, what the Dispatch wants to do is they do wanna try to get a more diverse group coming into the meetings. They're working on setting up a forum, and they want people from all different walks of life in the community to tell their stories. Now, Carla Christopher posted something on her Facebook page about this, and there's been some back and forth, and there was one gentleman who was just very negative, and it's not gonna work, and nobody wants to hear it, and white people need to understand there's white privilege, and there's white power, and, and, you know, on and on and on. I, I just couldn't stand anymore, and I finally replied and said, "Yeah, I, I, I see where you're coming from, but I don't agree with that, because we don't know what's going to happen." It's just like, you know, if we, if, if based on all previous encounters with the phone, with just telemarketers, we just decided, "Oh, we're not gonna try this tonight." 'Cause we don't know. Somebody may call, they may not either, but, you know, we don't know the outcome of it, and we're not really worried about the outcome of it. So, I wanted to, you know, start that off a little bit, Ann, because I know that you've been doing, when your work and all the different hats that you wear, you, you work with this kind of issue with diversity, and how do we get this common ground, and how do we talk to people that may not share our opinion, and especially being a candidate. You have to be able to...
Well, you have to listen to other people.
Yeah, you have to listen to people that you may not share their opinion.
Our coach from Atlanta, we had, did some work, myself, Corey Strathmire, and Barb Kovacs, we were part of the National Leadership for Public Health, and it's part of a division of the CDC. And so, we went down there and got some training, and then our coach eventually came here to York, and, and really, she told us that leadership is really about making space at the table for everybody. So, that's one of the reasons Allison's saying that she wants more people to come, is that is what she should do as a leader. And then, the second thing she told us was, "If the table does not exist, you must create it." You know, there's always gonna be, for every positive thing that you do, there's always going to be a naysayer, the person who says it's not going to work, but really, we have to just silence that in our own minds. Because the fact is, is that, you know, sometimes the negative is there for you to push harder and to elevate. And so, at one time, when I was young in my leadership, you know, and somebody would come against me and say something, "Oh, I don't agree with you, I don't, I like what you're saying," I would be easily offended and easily to, to jump in. And now, as a much stronger leader, I realize that, one, we need to listen to them, because a lot of times what they're giving us is our polish to our argument. So, if we really listen to what they're saying, it actually will help us do better work. So, in that particular case of that guy saying it's not going to work, what he's really saying is, "He can't make it work."
Right.
So, his assumption is, "No one can make it work." And there's where we have to just go and push harder. He can't make it work, but that doesn't mean you couldn't make it work, or I could. I think one of the biggest problems that we have in York is, we always want people to come to where we're having a meeting, and we really have to become that, the movers who go to people where they have a meeting. So, I know that you reach out to Allison on time, and I'll reach out to her too, but I think really, I would love to see the Dispatch, and they have done a lot of this work, so I'm not saying they haven't, is maybe go around to the different pastors and set up time with them.
Excellent idea.
And, and talk to the congregations, because that's when you're gonna get really the most diverse look at York, probably the best opinions and the best conversation.
Yeah.
So, you can pass it along, or I'll certainly do it, but, yeah, so, for all the people out there that says it can't be done, you mean you can't do it.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that we can't do it, or that we shouldn't.
Yeah, and I think it's also important to look at the big picture versus just, you know, that little narrow lens. And, you know, I have a, I have an excellent example of this. I went, I attended a housing conference last year.
Oh, yeah.
And they were talking about landlord-tenant rights, and how landlords get themselves in trouble unintentionally.
Yeah.
And one of the examples they used, this is, this is a true story, there was a, they were, I think they were doing construction or something, but anyway, they had a, they had several Indian individuals that were working on this project.
You mean like Native Americans?
Uh, Indian, from India.
Okay.
Indian, and they, they were working on this project, and they all liked to cook real spicy curry, very strong-smelling, very aromatic foods that not everyone likes to smell. So, there was coming issues in the camp, because some people just didn't like it, they complained, they were getting angry, and there was all kinds of friction. So, the ones that were running this, that, running the housing for them, said, "Okay, what we'll do is here, we'll, we'll let, we'll give you your own little space, so that you guys can, you can, you can cook to your heart's content, everybody's on the same page, you know, you know, not a big deal." Now, that sounds, that sounds reasonable, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
But what happened was, and it, it wasn't intended to be segregation or anything like that, it was meant really true-intended to try to, to resolve this dispute. What happened was, they hired another Indian individual, and they automatically said, "Okay, well, this is where all the Indian individuals live." Well, that Indian individual didn't like Indian food.
Hmm-hmm.
And because that individual didn't like Indian food, that individual decided and, you know, assumed that he was being segregated, when that's not the, the real rea, the, the reason why it's, why that housing existed. And the landlords never thought that, it never crossed their mind that maybe an Indian person, or a Chinese person, or an Italian person, or a Greek person, may not like their culture's food.
Yeah.
You know, or they may be allergic or something. And because of that, there was a huge misunderstanding, it went into, I believe, a lawsuit, and I'm, I don't remember what the resolution was, but it just shows that you can't just take things for granted, you just can't look at something and just eyeball it and make the snap judgment. There's all these different little nuances. My experience is different than Ann's, Ann's experience is different than mine, Ace has a whole different experience than both of us, so we, we need to find that common ground.
Well, I think we had some discussion earlier today, and the word holistic keeps coming up, and, and really, you do have to examine everything in a holistic approach, really saying, "How does this affect everybody?" And not just who does it affect in the moment, who does it affect long-term. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure that the company's intention was to try and just, you know, avoid arguments, but the truth is, is we, the more that we know about our own culture, the more that we appreciate everybody else's. You know, so a lot of times, this disagreement is because we don't really know our own culture, and we would not want somebody, I wouldn't want somebody to tell me what I should or shouldn't be eating, or where I could or could not cook something if I'm, you know, hired to do a job. I have as many rights as the next person hired to do the job. So, but you know, we do a lot of that assumptions about people, and, and that's just, unfortunately, that's just how we are a lot of times, and it's how we have been in our community of York. Oh, we were talking about that today, and some groups wanted to work together, and they said, "Well, everybody has an ego, and everybody gets standoffish." But the truth is, is we have a lot of important work to do, and we cannot, we have to pay attention to every person who's involved and taking a holistic approach to it. And sometimes it's better to go slat, slow to go fast. I had met a superintendent, and she said she had made a, a decision about attendance, and she said, she literally had a call, a negative call, every day about this decision she made for an entire year, from the board of directors to the teachers, to the parents, and she had said, "All I had to do was to have called one parent and said, 'How does this affect you?'" And she said, "I would have saved myself a year of negative phone calls." But that's how quick, you're right, we're quick to make decisions, and we're not quick to see, "How does that affect the person?" Who are most, most time trying to help. And so, she said she learned her lesson. So, I always try to think, "How does this affect, how do my decisions affect the next person, the next person?" And then, I wrote an article that's gonna be in the paper this weekend, and basically, it talks about that. It talks about that, we had, a lot of people out there in, in our city think that we should be able to make changes just like that.
Yeah, it doesn't happen.
Right? And what you don't realize is that, first off, changes take a lot of time, number one. Two, you have to see how these changes affect everybody, and they do affect you. So, a positive change for one group of people may in fact make a negative change for someone else.
Right.
And so, you have to weigh that out with what is the best for everyone. And so, you know, we have a lot of work to do in York, but we're gonna sometimes have to go slow in order to go fast.
So, how do you make those difficult decisions, Ann? If you have some, you say, "You're in city council," and play devil's advocate with you.
Yeah.
You're in city council, and you have to make a really difficult decision, and you know it's gonna impact people, you know, nobody's gonna, you know, there's, there's gonna be one section that's gonna be very unhappy, but there's just, there's just, there's just no other way that you can see that you can do this. How do you, how do you handle that?
Well, we talk about this in education all the time. The first thing we always say is, "What is the law?" So, number one, in all decision-making, everybody should examine what are the laws. So, that's the first thing we have to ask, is what are our city ordinance, what do they already say, and let that dictate it. Number two, you have to know what is the mission and objectives of, in this case, our city. And these are already written, so it's not like we have to rewrite them, we just have to get them out and read them. And then, the second, or the third thing is, is you have to have your own integrity. So, I have my own personal mission statement, I also have a professional mission statement. When I work with volunteers during the summer, I recommend all teenagers write a mission statement for their life.
That's a good idea.
Right, and in this way, when somebody asks them to do something negative, they can say, "Oh, I'm sorry, that's against my mission." I said, "Nobody's gonna argue with that."
Right.
If you tell them it's against your mission, people will respect that. And so, and then, you know, you have to have integrity. So, I will never, I will never do things that harm children, so that's part of my mission, is the only work that I will, you know, ever agree on is things that promote the well-being of children. So, and that does clear up a lot of that work. I think one of the things that, I don't know, that has bothered me, when I've watched city councils, a lot of times, everybody agrees on the decision, which I, I find sort of interesting, because I sit on a leadership team, and in our leadership team meetings, very solemnly do we all agree on a decision.
Yeah.
In fact, most of the time, it does come down to a vote, and luckily, I work for the kind of principal who allows us to vote, and, and it normally always comes down to a vote, and it's never that we all agree. So, I'm interested, I'm sort of, you know, concerned a little bit about that. How is that, that five individuals who come from different places always agree on things?
Yeah.
And so, that's gonna be an interesting experience for me to have, because I, I might hope that I do agree on some things, but I'm positive that I will not agree on everything.
Yeah, and that's, that's really not usual, that everyone agrees on everything all the ti, I mean, even outside of city council. I mean, I, you know, I'm just referring to like the, the Dispatch Board. I mean, I know there's been, and I'm usually the one that's like, "Nah, I don't think that's, that, I don't like it." And, you know, the Federation of the Democratic Women, their Facebook page, I mean, I'm usually the one that's a D-center, saying, "I don't know if this is gonna work." But you usually, you, that's what makes things tick, is that disagreement, because you challenge each other then.
Well, the best work is done, the best work is always done in when there was disagreement first. It's the most polished product you will have.
Yeah.
And so, I would like to see, when I get on city council, I plan on having a lot more dialogue with, one, the directors of our city, because they do good work, but there's some things that I would like to, you know, know more about. I plan on, of course, dialoguing with our mayor, because she's leading our community, and, you know, I, I want to know, you know, I ask her now, I was not gonna wait till then, I ask her now what she thinks about things, and, and I care about her opinion. Sometimes we do agree, and sometimes we do not agree, and I, I feel like that's okay, and I, I think she appreciates that as well.
I believe she does.
Yeah. But, no, I, I'm, so, you know, we have to have that discussion, especially when we're in the city council meetings, because the public's watching, and, and they want to know what's going on, and why do we think that, and why do we not think that. So, if, in case I vote no on something, it's certainly not because I don't care about what's best for our city, but if I don't agree, I'm, I'm not going to vote yes, just because everybody else is voting yes. I'm gonna need to know exactly, you know, what's the pros and cons of that, so, and I'm gonna definitely add to the communication and, and add to the conversation. And that's not to hurt anybody, or to even question their ability, or their strengths, or if it's good work. It's just because this, our city residents need to know why people are doing what they're doing, and how does that affect all of us.
Well, and you're also a model for the city.
Well, sure.
You're, you're a group of people that are making decisions, and you have an excellent opportunity to model those, those skills, those conflict resolution skills, you know, not just blindly, "Well, I don't wanna have conflicts, I'm just following along." Or, you know, on the other, "Well, you know, you're stupid if you think that." You know, conflict, I think so many of us take things personally when it's not personal. And I, I've, I've learned this over the years too, and especially doing this show. I don't take anything personally now, I really don't. You know, some, I emailed somebody, in fact, somebody yesterday said something about, "I, I, I'm so sorry, I forgot to email you, like, when did you email me? I don't even remember it." So, it, you just don't take, you don't take things personally, because you don't know what's happening. There's an excellent, I've done DBT therapy, which is dialectical behavioral therapy for many years now, and it's, it's wonderful. It's more of a skills, a skills training than it is a true therapy. It's kind of a hybrid.
It's giving you tools.
Yes, it gives you tools. It gives you tools for interpersonal relationships, how to handle motion regulation, which is a big thing with conflict, you need to handle those emotions. And one of the excellent examples that they give is, if you're broken down along the side of the road, and you're, you're just standing there waiting for the tow truck or whatever, car goes by, it's your, you see it's your friend, you kinda wave, your friend glances over and then keeps going on. What do, you know, what do you think about that? Most people are like, "Holy crap."
Yeah.
What's, what, really? Really, you saw me here and you didn't stop? Okay, now let's back up and do this a second time. You're standing, same scenario, you're on the side of the road, you're with the car, friend goes by in the car. This time, the car slows down just enough that you can look in the backseat, and you can see there's an injured child there that's bleeding, and the car continues on.
Yeah.
Now, your perception's completely changed.
Yeah, that's right.
And those are the kind of things I think we need to start thinking about, is so, when we're having these conflicts, and when we, we're having these discussions, you have to kind of think about, like, you know, if Ann's making a decision that I don't like, I mean, I don't know, maybe you're, I, I don't know, maybe you're doing something around our block or something, you're gonna put, you're gonna raise, raise taxes for some, something, and I don't like it. You have to kind of see, like, where you're coming from.
Well, I, I think that we always need to give people the benefit of the doubt, we need to, and this is something that I've struggled with too, is to think the best of people. I've gotten much better with that. Oh, we have a call.
Do you wanna?
Yeah, let's answer, let's see who it is.
Hello?
Hello, my name is Melody Cassinis. Are you, this, White Rose Community Television?
Yeah, this is, this is Knowledge is Power. I'm Wanda, I'm the host, and I'm here with Ann Clark, who's running for city council.
Are you a part of 43 News?
No.
I don't think this is actual color, this is like, you went to different news station.
Well, no, I wanna make a complaint.
Oh, no, no, sorry. We're not, we're on air right now. We're actually doing a show live.
Oh, I can't get you that way, I'm not.
Aw, all right, well, thank you for calling.
I didn't even know you were, you existed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
That was too cute.
Yeah.
She's like, "No, I wanna make a complaint."
Yeah. Well, I told you, telemarketers.
That's right, but that was good though. Unfortunately, we went the right place. So, she didn't wanna make a complaint with her us, so that was good. So, but I was saying that, you know, we have to give people the benefit of the doubt, and to believe that their intentions are always good. I talk about this with students all the time, is that we have become a society that tries to avoid conflict at all costs. And the, the reality is, is that conflict is healthy. I mean, people have conflict, you know, and so, what I've tried to do with the students that I've worked with is not to avoid conflict at all costs. I've tried to show them how that we can have conflict, how we can talk through that, that I've tried to show them how that we can have conflict, how we can talk through that, that there are tools and supports that we can use to get through it on the other side, because we don't want a society where every time there's conflict, that children pick up guns to resolve that.
Right.
You know, kids should be able to have a disagreement, an argument, and be able to walk away from it and live. You know, but we've become that society that anytime there's a conflict, it, it elevates to the point of violence, and it doesn't have to be that way. So we're gonna have to get over it, and you know, and I, my boss always says this to me, he says, um, it's hard not to take it personal when it affects you.
Right.
And so uh, I want the person who comes in the room who is full of passion, and, you know, and I, I wanna talk to the people that it affects them. Because so many of our decisions um, do affect people, and yet, the people that are affecting, we don't hear from.
Right.
And so a lot of times the decisions are made, um, might not be the best decision for the greater good of York, or the greater people of York, but the people we're showing up in the meeting is that one voice, and so we think that's the person that we should be listening to, 'cause that's the person showed up. So all of us have to take responsibility to show up in the meeting. If there's a meeting, and you don't like how things are going with our city, you have to show up and say, you know what? I don't like it, and I don't appreciate it, and I, and I vote.
Yeah. And, and I think people-
And exercise that right to vote.
Exactly, and I, I think, I think part of the issue with the, the low attendance of these local, these, these local uh, council meetings is, you know, first of all, I don't think people really understand how important they are.
Yeah.
And second of all, you just named a really good issue in the beginning, is if everybody's just there, like, okay, wanna pass this resolution? Sure, why not? It's done. Well, the people don't feel like they have a voice.
Yeah.
And I don't care how charismatic you may be, you know, you may be the most charismatic person on that council. Um, it's still, it, it means nothing if you're hearing just, well, you know, we're gonna do this no matter what. So I'll, I'll pretend I'm your buddy outside of council chambers, but, you know, when I come here, I'm just gonna vote how I want anyway. So I think that's a big issue. I think we need to make this more interactive, and, and maybe even, I would even, I don't know if you, if you guys have plans for this, if you have any plans for this, Anne, but, I, I always thought focus groups would be a great thing to do for certain issues in the city.
I, I agree. I am very excited, um, since I've been, I'm running, I've been talking about that all the neighborhoods have to get together with people and start talking about what's best for their neighborhood. And actually, I've seen some of that start to come out on Facebook, which makes me really happy. I've, I've seen people saying, um, I live on this block, and I'm looking for people who want to fix homes, or wanna have this conversation, or any of that, and um, I've just, I'm going to be from the, the fourteenth, February fourteenth, uh, to March first, literally every night, I'm going to be at a, at a open venue.
Okay.
So that people-
Do you wanna show, we have the-
Yeah, do you have the pictures, Ace?
Ace, you were able to load this picture?
Okay, so these are the ones that are already set up.
Okay.
But um, anybody can call me, or, or email me, or Facebook me, and uh, give me a date and time, and I will come out to where they're at.
Okay.
Oh, that's when we had the kickoff downtown, and you came. And that was fantastic. There's the fireman there, and my, my grandchildren are there, my daughter. Um, some of my, my campaign people are there, and some of students are there, which is really exciting.
Cold and rainy, and people still showed up.
You know, I counted it, we had thirty-two people, which I thought was fantastic, because it was terrible cold.
It was horrible.
It was horrible.
Yeah, and it was, it was doing some kind of rainy, sleety.
It was rainy, sleety, and we found that one uh, good roof line there, that sort of keep us dry. And uh, but it was a great day.
But then we all moved into Ironic, and it was, that was fabulous.
Ironic, didn't Dave and Steve just do the best time there, so? Ironic is open for anyone who wants to have a venue there, which is great. That's like a further away shot of it.
Yeah.
When it gets to some of these with, have the date on them.
Yeah, you can just go through, these are, yeah, these are just, these are, you can just go through those, Ace, and just get to the, please, thank you.
Yeah, he's getting there.
Yeah, they're just, um, these are all pictures of your kickoff.
And people can find this information right on my Facebook page, which is uh, Anne Clark for a City Council. So you can go on my Facebook page there and get these. Um, you can also get them on my regular Facebook page, but that's Annie Juarez-Clark, that you have to go to there. I think Ace is trying to get through them. Isn't that fantastic umbrella?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I love that umbrella.
My friend Ms. Ortiz handed that to me, 'cause it was getting rained on.
I did, I saw that.
Yeah, she's, she is just the best. I'm, luckily, I'm surrounded by really good people who always uh, support me and have my back, and I, I really appreciate that, 'cause it, it matters who shows up for you. I don't know. Okay, he was, he wasn't able to upload, so yeah, just go to my Facebook page. Um, I'm gonna be at uh, Ironic, since we talked about that, I will be at Ironic for an hour. I'm gonna be at Central Family Restaurant on George Street, I'll be at New Grounds. Um, see where else am I going? I'm going to all the Neighborhood Association meetings.
Central, was it Central Market Restaurant?
Oh yeah, I'm gonna be at, oh, I forgot, JR Fries. I'm gonna be at JR Fries, um, during Market. Um, and then I am going to all the Neighborhood Association meetings. Um, I've heard back, I think, from four of them, I mean, there's, there is like thirteen Neighborhood Associations, but I do have four of them already set up that I'm going to, and so um, but I will be available. So if anybody wants me to come to their um, business, or to their community meeting, or their church, I would, I would definitely love to go there, because I really need to know what everybody thinks. I mean, luckily, I have a lot of people reaching out to me, but um, you know, I said that I don't have, I don't know many people around Davis, so again, if you're in the Davis neighborhood, uh, please reach out to me so that I can um, talk to you and hear your concerns, and, you know, and their hopes and dreams for York, for our children and our grandchildren. Um, you know, my family, my children still live here, and my grandchildren live here, and, and I want York to be sustainable, and I want it to be thriving.
I think these-
Over the next ten years.
Yeah, see, what do you have here? Uh, yeah, here's, oops.
Are you trying to pull them up?
Yeah, I pulled them up for you. There we go.
Okay, let me, all right, let me look at them. I gotta look close as I'm doing it. So February uh, sixteenth, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty, JR's Fries at Central Market. Um, this one here is uh, February seventeenth, um, from five to six, I'll be at Ironic. And then right after that, I'm gonna go right over to uh, New Grounds, from six to seven on the same day.
Ah.
So it's a block apart, which is perfect, you know? And then on uh, February the fifteenth, from five to six, I'll be at uh, Central Family Restaurant. And of course, I wanna thank all the uh, you know, the owners of these businesses for allowing me to come and, you know, take up space in their business, and uh, just because they want uh, people to be able to come out and talk. Um, petition sta, signing starts on February the fourteenth.
Okay.
And so that is critical. I uh, want to get um, three hundred signatures in seven days. You only need a hundred, but I want three hundred signatures in seven days.
You'll get them.
Yeah, and I really would like to get the majority of these signatures myself, because I really wanna meet every single person who's signing for me, 'cause I think that's really important. Um, you know, and, and I've, I've signed petitions without, you know, physically having the person there. But I've never signed a petition for somebody that I didn't actually know to some degree. And so I think that that's so important.
Yeah, it, it definitely is, and I'm gonna ask Ace, 'cause it, we're, we are a little after six o'clock, so I'm gonna just go ahead and see. I'm gonna open the phone for people.
Okay.
So that if you wanna, while we continue to talk, if you want to call in, um, Ace, can you put the number up there for me? And the number is seven-one-seven, it's eight-four-six-five-zero-six-seven. Again, seven-one-seven-eight-four-six-five-zero-six-seven. So if you wanna ask Anne a question, um, she's here to hopefully answer.
Yeah.
So we'll just continue our little dialogue here of all the great things that, that you're doing, and all the plans that you have, and what you'd like to, you know, what your, what your vision is for the city.
Well, let me, if uh, if you don't mind, I wanna go over my three platforms, and then you can ask me questions, I go over them. So, of course, the first one is gonna be education, because you know, that's uh, my background. I've been in education for seventeen years. Prior to going into education, I did own my own company. Um, so from the time that I was eighteen to thirty-something, um, I either ran a company, or I owned a company. And so a lot of people don't think, know that, that I have that business background.
I didn't.
Yeah, and I have a, a degree in business, and a concentration in organizational psychology. So that's one of the reasons that I am able to work with people, and hopefully have people work with me. Um, I feel like the education, of course, of course, all of our city schools need to be improved. Um, and I think that that's going to come from our parents, really getting in there to the city council meeting, uh, not the city council meetings, but the school board meetings, and giving us true direction on our city schools. Um, the one big lacking area for all urban schools, not just York, is the lack of, um, not just technology, but the use of technology. We're not coding enough, we're not doing STEAM enough, we're not doing engineering enough. Um, these things are gonna be vital in the next ten years for the kind of jobs that are coming out, and we're not even speaking the language. Um, also in education, uh, again, I was in a meeting today. Um, there's a lot of developers who wanted to restore single-family homes, and one of the conversations was, is that, you know, we can get people approved to buy the home, but we don't really give the education for that homeowner to know how to save money, um, how to use the banks to, not just, you know, keep money, but to grow money. And so I really wanna see us do some adult education around the community on uh, citizenship, on homeownership, on banking. Um, there are tons of places who wanna provide this type of education, and really, we just need to get the venue, and get people there, and, and just have them not be afraid, because a lot of times our residents, you know, um, it's hard to go into a room when you, you don't know people, number one.
Right.
And two, when they're gonna be discussing something that might be new to you. All of us feel uncomfortable. If I went into a room and they were discussing, um, sometimes I do go into rooms, and they're discussing things that I don't know, and I stay in the room because I wanna learn, but it doesn't mean you don't feel uncomfortable, because we do.
Right.
And so I, I want our, our listeners to know that, you know, there is um, there is growth in being uncomfortable. Right? Leaders, leaders become comfortable being uncomfortable, and stuff, so that's a big part.
To someone on Facebook with the Carla.
Yeah.
Go back and forth, that, yeah, these dialogues are uncomfortable, but that's how we grow.
Well, that is how we grow. So education is always going to be really big for me. Um, one, because I was a teacher, and, and two, because um, I've done so much work around parent involvement, and uh, our parents need help. And they don't need people to criticize them, or tell them all the things they're not doing. Um, people need those bridges. And so education's key. Um, in the area of economics, I mean, we are in acute poverty right now in York, Pennsylvania. I don't know if people know that, that we're ranked five hundred out of five hundred in acute poverty.
I didn't know that. I knew it was bad, I didn't know it was that bad.
And so uh, I believe this is a direct correlation to our education system, and, and until we really improve our educational system, we may not have the great effect on poverty that we would like to. Um, with that being said, this is why it's so critical for outlining neighborhoods to really start um, talking about what can anchor their neighborhood besides the school. Every neighborhood has a school, which is an anchor, but in addition to that, what businesses are there? Um, what homeowner association is there? And looking at economics, we're in a holistic approach from the grassroots up. We have to find a way to connect our individual neighborhoods back to our downtown. I know a lot of people are concerned, because there's so much development downtown versus other places, but the truth is, is you have to have a vibrant downtown.
Right.
You have to have a downtown that has um, good sidewalks, who has restaurants, who have um, theaters, who have art. This is what makes a, a community start to really grow, when you have that. At the same token, you cannot forget about your individual um, outlining neighborhoods. But you can't go in, you know, you can't have a developer go into, let's say, a neighborhood on uh, maybe Duke Street, and just take over the neighborhood.
Right.
Because residents don't want that either. It's not authentic, and it's not holistic. So some of this is gonna have to come from our, you know, our local neighborhood community leaders.
And it breeds bad feelings, many times.
It really does, it really does, because um, what I might want to see happen in the West End, where I'm, you know, anchored, um, and people know that my intentions are good, because they know me. Um, if I went over and tried to do the exact same thing on the East End, maybe they would not feel like, you know, my intentions were good, 'cause they don't know me. However, if they told me, I would like to grow a garden, or we'd like to put in this theater, or we'd like to put in this store, can you help me do that? I most certainly will help people do that, and I know other people who will help that. Um, the third part is on um, equity. I've done a lot of work around health equity. Uh, there is one area that in York that we are very solid. And most people might not know that, that we've actually had a true movement in health equity. All of our children are moving more now in the schools than they ever had. We have more balanced food now in the schools than we ever had. Actually, all schools are offering four meals a day. I don't think a lot of people know that. Um, the students get breakfast. Um, all of our students in York City now get snack. There's a snack program, it's available. Um, they also get lunch, and all of our city schools, I believe, are now having after-school programming. And so dinner is also offered at that, so I'm almost positive that all our local schools are doing that. Five years ago, that was not the case, and so we have made some um, substantial growth there. We have numerous gardens that have gone in. Uh, my favorite garden, of course, is Hope Street Garden, because you know, it's the one that I've helped build. Um, but there's gardens going in all over York, and a lot of people don't know that the RDA has more than three hundred vacant properties that they would love for city residents to um, get those properties, and develop gardens, or develop uh, businesses on that empty space. You could do lots of different things, and that, that properties, really, all people have to do is have a budget, have insurance, and have a decent plan. And most of those properties are for absolutely no money. And that, I don't think a lot of people know that, but there is uh, that's out, available to people out in our community.
That's wonderful.
So those are my three big things, and just really getting us uh, we need to communicate much more effectively, and I, I'm really committed to uh, we're gonna start framing our own message, um, and we're gonna stop allowing other people to tell us who we are, because we are strong people in York. We've always been strong people, um, we've always been proud people, and a lot of times people try to diminish that from us, and tell us who we are, and I've lived here my whole life. And uh, I know that I've worked hard, and I know that the women and men that I work with, and have been friends with, they've worked hard. And they've raised good children, and, and, you know, they've put their work in, so um, I'm not gonna let somebody from the outside tell us who we are anymore.
Yeah, and it's, it's, you know, I am from the outside. I grew up in Lancaster County, and I moved uh, into the city in twenty-twelve, and you know, I was, I have to say, I was amazed by the people that I encountered, because all I had heard
Yeah.
was the negative. Oh, you're going, you're going to York, oh my god, be careful, they're gonna, you'll get, you'll get shot.
Right.
You'll get shot. You know, it's like, they have the vision that there's these bands of outlaws running, running around the streets, shooting people, and that's not true. There's a lot of very smart, intelligent, savvy, creative people in this community
Yeah.
that are trying very hard, and there's also a, a lot of people that do not have that ego that, you know, you talked about earlier, and I understand exactly, you know, I agree, because I've seen it too. But I think that's, that's the kind of people that I try to get around. If you have an ego, I don't even wanna deal with you. You know, I, I try to be with people that don't have that ego, because those are the ones that, again, it's slow, but they're slow and steady, and they do help to foster change.
Yeah.
Because there's no ego, because everyone's on the same page. Everyone wants to, wants to-
Well, we do have to have some quick wins. I think that's the one thing, is you always have to have long-term goals, but you do have to have quick wins. Um, you have to have things that make you feel good, that keep going on. Um, and I'm gonna say that, you know, when I was doing my early work, um, I was very possessive over it. A good friend of mine said, um, um, Annie Clark, you don't have to write your name on it, 'cause people will know when it's your work. And um, I didn't believe that at first, but I can tell you that over the years, that has absolutely come true. That when I do an event, it looks like I've done the event. Um, however, I do understand how people feel, because a lot of times, this has just been our history, um, is that, you know, people come up with a great idea, and they're just at that point of, you know, bringing it to fruition, and then somebody takes the idea, or takes credit for the idea. So we've, uh, sort of have bred this untrustworthy feeling about each other. But the more that we collaborate, and the, and really, the people who want to do good work, they're gonna find you, and you're gonna find them. There is a true synergy, that you will have the right people drawn to you, and the right people will be repelled. So as soon as you commit in your own mind, your own neighborhood, that you're gonna make a difference, um, the right people are gonna come to you. And you don't have to worry about um, people, you know, taking your ideas. I used to copyright everything, and even when I'm telling a, a new, like, a new activist, I'm like, you're gonna need to copyright that, you know? Just because I want them to know that if they're working with me, um, I wa, I'm gonna give them credit. You know, oh, that person brought that peace, and we need to speak people's greatness. Um, but, so I've under, I understand that um, wanting to own something, you know, that comes from our mind, and comes from our, our passion. Um, but the further you go in your leadership, the less that that will matter. And, and I think that's probably why it's a good time for me to run for city council, because I already have accomplished so many things that I'm so proud of, that I don't need my name on it anymore. I just wanna do more good work. I just want a bigger venue, um, to change what, the changes that occurred in the West End, um, that I had, I played a part in. I want them to occur in all our cities, all of our blocks. And I don't care if my name's on it or not.
Yeah.
I just wanna help other people do good work now, but it did take me a long time to get there, and, and I try to say that to people, because um, you don't have to be a perfect leader today. You just have to keep working at your leadership.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and I, I'm just kind of at that point too, where it's, you know, I know I do a lot of collaboration with, with wonderful, beautiful, intelligent individuals like Carla Christopher, and other activists and advocates, and, you know? I, I just, I just, last fall, I did this show with Carla, and we did a talk on race relations. And she gets embarrassed, because I keep saying, watch it. I don't, you know, I don't have, just don't even ignore me, 'cause I'm pretty much not saying anything anyway. I just want people to see her.
Yeah.
And I think we, I think that kind of comes with getting older and wiser too, that we don't have that, we, we don't have that me, 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 look at me, look at me, look at me attitude anymore. We're more willing to hand the reins over to someone, and let them take part of it, and let them share in, in the glory, so to speak.
Well, generationally, they say, um, you need to have the older people, so that they have some wisdom, but you need to have the young people, because they have the energy. And so that's true. So we need young people to come out here and lead, because they have the energy to get it done. And we just, we've already made the mistake, so we can help you not make the mistakes.
Yeah, that's good. Well, Ace has given me the ten-minute warning.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to call in, I'll, does you have, I don't have my glasses on, is, Ace, do you have that? You don't have the number up there. Can you put- You don't have the number up there. Can you put the number up there again, please? Can you put the number up there?
It's up.
Is it up?
Yep.
Should mean you can't see. We need a larger, we need a larger monitor.
Yeah, we need a larger monitor. I probably should put my glasses on, but I, you know, I rarely use them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, so anybody, if you wanna call and ask Annie a question, please feel free.
Yeah. I think the big things are, is that we have to uh, on this coming Saturday, um, the Democrat, the Democratic Party is having their kickoff, which is fantastic. So that's happening on, on Saturday. I'm excited about that. Um, the African-African-American Love Feast is occurring on Sunday. Um, my principal, um, Leonard Hart is being honored.
Oh.
And we are so, so, we are so proud of him and um, there's a whole team of us going because we are just gonna celebrate him. And I know that there's a a lot of other wonderful honorees who are being um, recognized on Sunday. Um, I got to do something I never did before and I wanna give this a plug, is I was actually a judge for the York County Miss American Scholarship Program.
Oh wow.
And I never did this before. And I have to tell you, I mean, it's a long, long day. You're there from uh, twelve to ten P.M. So it is a long day. But um, let me say this to you, the, the pa- I, I judged the closed pageant, which these are all women from York County who are running for Miss America. And uh, they were, there was, we interviewed uh, six young women and um, and then they went through the whole, you know, all the different pieces that you go through. But I can tell you, we are raising some fantastic women in York County. And I know that we are in, you know, and our York, our men are, are fantastic too, but I have to tell you, these young women, I thought they're so um, focused, laser-focused and for their age.
Yeah.
You know, and I was not at that at seventeen or eighteen years old. I was focused on some, on work, but I wasn't laser-focused like they were and and all of them had just um, great platforms that they really wanted to change the world and do some big things. And so um, I appreciate that they reached out to me and they asked me to be a judge. Um, but now I can't be a judge for another five years.
Oh wow.
Because that's the rule, because they don't want you to like see girls coming up through the program and then you vote for your favorite. So uh, they're gonna need new judges next year, so I'm gonna maybe put your name up.
Yeah.
Everybody should do that. If you've never done it, you should, those girls work really hard. It's, it's much harder than I ever thought it was and the experience, it was great. Um, so that's going on. I'm very excited about that. Uh, I'm very excited about, we just got back from Pittsburgh, myself and one of my colleagues. Uh, there was a, a team of York City educators out there. I mean, it was me and my um, colleague, but there was um, other educators there from the York City School District um, participating. And um, there was about five hundred educators from across the state. And we go, and we present one uh, community engagement in uh, the principal's platform, but we sat in all kinds of different um, series on STEAM, on engineering, on uh, coding. And so really, technology is what is being spoken across the state of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, and technology is, technology could help really lift people out of poverty. It could help revitalize communities. Technology is, in, in, and technology, I think, sometimes gets a bad rap because people think that it's replacing people.
Mm, well, York is the perfect city for this. And the reason why is because uh, we are teetering on greatness and we are small enough to make the changes necessary to be that great city and yet we are large enough to get credit for making it. Um, one of the other things I'm so excited about is that there are four now, four going in adult learning centers on Market Street, which I don't think most people know that. There's a clock educator, a coding is going in. Uh, the New Grounds is now doing um, like uh, seminars that is happening, uh, that's going on. And then there's also a, a barber teaching shop that they teach, you know, to be a barber.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that's something holistic that's happening in York is that Market Street is now becoming really the education hub for adults in York City. And I, I wanna see that actually go further, because there's a lot of growth that's gonna go, go on there.
Yeah, and that's important too, because people that don't have a car, don't, that, that, they can walk. They can walk to this, these, these classes.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't have to worry about going all the way out to Hack.
That's right.
Cause you have to get a bus. And you still have to kind, you still, if you still, the way it's positioned, it's still kinda hairy.
Mm-hmm. One of my biggest concerns right now is that, you know, Giants closed on the West End, which was not, Giants Grocery Store was not part of York City, but it was close enough for a lot of people to walk in that just closed down.
Yes.
Um, we only have one grocery store in the city of York, which is Sea Town over on Queen Street. Um, our markets do take the SNAP program. I hope that everybody knows that out there, that you can use your food stamps and your WIC at Central Market and at Penn Street Market. Um, but really, we're going to need um, someone who does groceries to step up and bring a grocery store to our city.
Mm-hmm.
Because this really creates a huge disparity for our senior citizens, for our mothers who do not have cars. I cannot imagine when I had four young children getting on a bus
Mm-hmm.
to try to go to Walmart to get groceries. And I mean that. And so we really need someone to step up and, and look at the property around York City and find a way to put a grocery store in. Even if there are mini-marts, but not like a Turkey Hill, not like a corner store. But like a, a reasonably priced mini grocery store.
Yeah.
Because um, this, you know, that's something that, that's something that I am gonna put energy into, because this cannot continue, because our, our, our people are not eating healthy food.
Yeah.
You know, they're just not. It's not available. It's not readily available that it should be in our community.
And buses, it, I can, I can speak from experience on this one. When I moved in here, I didn't have a car.
Yeah.
It took me two years to get my car, get another car. And I had, luckily, though being in the support housing, we do have a case manager that helps, that helps the residents. So she's nice enough that she would take her, she would take her clients to the grocery store. But I've gone to Walmart already with my little basket, my little pool thing, on the bus. It's not fun, people. Anybody who's ever done it knows it's not fun. And you can't get big things. You can't get, like, you can only get like maybe a jug of water or whatever. You can't get a big case of water. And that, that then becomes more expensive.
Yeah. That's right, cause you're buying a smaller quantity, because you can't, you can't all the big things.
Yeah.
And I love that we have Rabbit Transit and they do a lot of things to help the community, um, which is fantastic, but it's just not ideal for a senior citizen or someone who's not used to the busing system or someone who has small children to try to buy groceries and, you know, get on there and get off of there. So I'm glad that we have Rabbit Transit. I just don't think it's ideal for grocery shopping.
Yeah, and it's also, the, the markets are great for fresh food. But you can't get other things there that, that you would use, like you can't get maybe iced teas or um, you know, things that are frozen, um, you know.
I didn't even think about that either. So that's definitely an opportunity for Penn Street Market. This is an opportunity for you.
Yeah.
Because they, you're right, they could put those refrigerated cases in and, and actually become maybe that, I know that they, they are the farmer's market, so they a lot of times wanna keep the produce and things in, but they maybe could fill that void.
Yeah, they could maybe put an area. Maybe there's an area that's not used heavily that they could renovate into, like a little area.
That modern grocery store, yeah.
Yeah, for like frozen things and
Yeah.
things like that, cause there's other things that you can't get. So.
You're absolutely right.
So, well, Ace has given me the, the two-minute peace sign.
Okay.
So I, I wanna thank you, Annie, for coming on. No one called, um.
That's alright. That's alright.
We tried. Uh, it, it, so, well, someone did call, but uh,
They went to lodge a complaint.
Yeah, they went to lodge a complaint, which, you know, I'm not surprised at the show.
That was, that was so classy. I mean, you're gonna enjoy that for years to come.
Well, we're, we're, we're taping this, so we're gonna have it all, we'll have it up at, at, I don't know, I have to get my, my tech guru Tony to put it up. So within the next few days or so, or by the latest next week, we'll, we'll get it up. But I wanna thank you again for coming and you're gonna be going uh, to First Friday tomorrow.
Yeah, I wanna go to First Friday tomorrow. I'm not sure exactly where yet, but I'm, you know, and Restaurant Week is starting.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I definitely have to go and check out all the restaurants, because we have, that's the one thing, we have the best food. You cannot, you will not go hungry in York with restaurants.
So just check out Anne. She's gonna be all over the place. You know, you, just, and if you, you do have the information on your, on your Facebook page that if you wanna call her, you wanna email her, she's more than happy to talk to you. Um, I'm glad that, actually the show, Technology tonight.